For like occupant or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Students are gonna be there, makes sense.
Yeah.
It needs to be.
Amherst has a minimum requirement in most of the zoning that it's a minimum of two spaces per unit. They can go up from there, but they want a minimum of two.
Yeah, but what's the maximum? I thought it was two spaces per bedroom is the maximum plus one.
I'm not aware.
That seems a lot.
Two spaces per bed seems a lot.
You have eight spaces for a four-bedroom apartment.
Right, yeah, right.
You have parking lots outside of a house.
Right. But it would be, you know, you still have to look at lot coverage and, and building coverage, lot coverage, and all of those metrics. And obviously, if it's a small lot, you're not gonna have that many spaces.
So maybe it's just take the blanket statement that it needs to be addressed.
Yeah. And I think that one per bedroom would be reasonable.
Reasonable, yeah. And two, like, unoccupied guest spots that never get built or not permanently, like, unless it's a private.
To me, that seems like it would be more problematic because then you can have friends over. You know, if you had two spaces per bedroom, like you said, you got a four-bedroom apartment, now you got room for eight cars off-street. So that seems, you need to be excessive.
Well, whatever the number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It needs to be.
But I think that it's also unrealistic to say, we're only gonna give you two spots in a four-bedroom apartment because then people are gonna be like, well, where do you expect us to park? You've got all kinds of areas, you've got a two-acre lot, and I mean, you want us to park on-street? I mean, what do you want us to do? So somewhere in the middle.
But do we get, do we, are we involved in telling him how many parking spaces he can have in, like, a single-family home?
Well, if he has to enforce it, he's forced to buy a lot.
No, I mean, there's a difference between single-family home and an apartment that's commercial. Yeah, we're looking at it as commercial. Unless it's owner-occupied, then it's still residential property.
But the actual building's a single-family home, right? Whether it's rented to five people who don't know each other, or it's not really, it's not an apartment building. Hallways with locked doors and, like, an apartment building. Individual units, kind of thing? Yeah. I don't know, I was just wondering that, like, nobody tells me how many parking spaces I have to have at my new house, right?
No. You need debt.
And a lot of friends. Yeah, I don't know, I was just curious about it. But I think we did, we did, he had a plan that showed the parking spaces and, I mean, it was just kind of, we didn't really harp on that part, I think we just talked about.
The only issue we drew with the parking plan was just to close off access to the end of town though, just to set the company to care of.
Yeah. So? Okay.
Sorry.
Is the young lady want to come in for the?
Yeah, okay. You can do Allen's.
Do you have the vote in front of you or are you?
Yeah. Well, then we can go skip down to eight then. Allen St. Clair, owner of 46 Monmouth Maple Street, map NC, Lot 61A. Seeks finding to alter and expand an existing two-family non-conforming structure. Okay, so what's the issue on this one, Kim?
Which one are we doing?
Uh, eight.
Number eight?
Yeah.
St. Clair.
Oh, okay, then.
This is the new one, right?
No, that's not the new one. You already voted on that. The new one's page two. And it all has to do with the senior center.
Okay, so this one, this one escapes me.
You weren't here for this one, I don't know. Or we just, no, John was here for it. It was, um, he's putting the second story on part of the house.
I don't think John was here for that one. I think we didn't have a vote.
Oh, yeah, John wasn't here for that one. We did the meeting informally, but we didn't, uh...
Oh, so you didn't have the three members?
We didn't have the three members, so we didn't vote.
Can we do?
Valleys?
Valleys first?
Okay.
Then we can do.
All right. So we'll skip back or revert back to number seven. Future owner of 40 West Street, map 4H, Lot 56, seeks a special permit to convert a 1776 single-family dwelling into a two. As a law of ways, zoning see used table attachment one. So this is clearly before 1960.
Yeah. And then uses a two-family forever. Unfortunately, it's just been taxed as a single-family.
Did you have anything more to add to this, or?
No, I just wanted to be here when you have your final vote.
Okay.
Really wanted to hear it.
Okay. So we are going to reaffirm the vote now, all right? Hold the favor.
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. So Allen's saying you have to... Yeah, we have to. Okay, so just for, I guess, my benefit.
Sure.
Start over again.
Sure, yeah. So I can, I've got some visuals that I can provide. Essentially, an existing two-family building. And I wanna do this, expand on it, my grazing part of it. These are some kind of area photos that show the property.
Oh, this is, uh, this is a nursing home, yeah, right? Late nighters, yeah.
It's right next to the nursing home, Tim. Nursing home is here, Home Depot is there, everything is there. So this is the first residential building.
Right. Yeah.
Surrounded by, it's a commercial property. And it's kind of the old classic apartment, it's where it starts it out and it just goes as a train towards the back.
You have a barn, you approved it, so.
There was a barn over here, it was removed, yeah. There's a garage, and then this four-bay, modern building, and there's kind of a shed barn over here that was removed ten years ago. So you can fit down the back portion of it, it's only forty percent of the structure, and rebuild it. It's a story and a half right now, I'm worried about two stories. So there's some elevations here that kind of show before and after.
This is the rear.
That's the front.
That's the front.
So if you look at the front, the structure.
Okay, yeah, here's that, yeah, yeah, great.
This is the street view. That's the porch, that's the porch here.
Yeah.
This is gonna show us, you know, the section. So the long roof, there's a little slot ceiling up there, so it's kind of portioned out. Connecting, yeah, it'll be, this room here will be part of the front unit. So this is looking, this view, here, if you look from the front.
Yeah.
After, this is the street view, so the street here.
Mm-hmm.
Before and after. So it does come a little higher, but noticeably, it's the same roof lines. I brought these photos to kind of show what I didn't have last time was that there's some mature trees here, they're screening it from the road, from the public view. So visual impact is gonna be, this view here is from the Monmouth Maple Avenue, the Home Depot side, because it always is. Back elevations. There's really no change in any of the setbacks because this is, the skid yard's gonna get wider, but it doesn't come past the existing porch line. So we're not doing any more encroachment on the front or side setbacks. We are encroaching on the rear, but it's a 200-foot setback, so we're low with it. First floor, essentially, right now, it's a three-bedroom on the first floor, three-bedroom on the second floor. We'd be changing it up so that this is one, this is two rooms. And going from over on there to, uh, to right now.
So there'll be three apartments in this?
It'll stay two.
Oh, it'll stay two?
Yeah. It's just that right now, the whole first floor is one unit, and the whole second floor is another unit.
Okay.
This will go away, and this will be, right now, the stairs are only stairwell, and we're just gonna open it up into the kitchen, so the upper bit, this will be one unit.
Okay. And this will be the internal stairs for that second unit?
Exactly. Yeah. So it'd be very similar to a colonial-type front in the back, and the same in the front. It'll be a bit more like a cape in the front because those are the story and a half. The internal stairs that were isolated to go up to the second floor and help you open it up to serve that one unit, which is a second floor. Stays a duplex, just a bit of a different configuration. Clay parking, clay area, it's a eight-point-hand, something along those lines.
What is the board building you're for?
Storage. I have a couple of empty cars in there, and I actually own and operate a property management company, and have some rentals of my own, so we keep refrigeries and appliances and things like that. But this is the plot plan that shows. Modern building, garage, existing structures, there's tons of setbacks in all directions, except for the front, but we're not changing the front setback at all.
Okay. Any questions? We guys talked about this before.
Someone was here from the nursing home, just to see what was going on, if you have a problem or anything.
Okay. I'm good with it. Okay, is there a motion?
Save it.
Oh.
No, you don't make the motion.
Make the motion first, yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I'll make the motion to grant the finding to authorize the decision not conforming to that structure.
Hold on the favor. Aye. Aye.
Okay.
You're all good, Alan.
Appreciate it.
And do we wanna go to the, wanna back then?
Okay, okay, okay.
Seven thirty, and I guess we're at that time.
The first one, we can also do originally, you had the previously heard, number one in the agenda.
Okay. The Town of Hadley Senior Center Building Committee seeks relief from zoning bylaw section 19.3, which prepares a shingle roof appearance. The new senior center is designed with a metal standing seam roof. And it was withdrawn last time?
No, it wasn't, well, did we ever get the guidance, where were we getting guidance from Town Council?
Yeah, I was talking to John.
Yeah. And since planning board hasn't heard this at all, we're gonna wait for their initial hearing. One question that came to mind to me today was, has historical commission had any input on this?
Yes, they actually, um, they went through their hearing.
They did? They had a hearing on it?
Yeah, they approved it.
They did, okay. The only thing, I guess, I'd ask is that we made that part of our record?
Did Town Council say that we could vote on this zoning bylaw relief now? Or do we have?
Yeah, they said we could.
Okay.
But I'd like to go through at least the initial hearing of planning board before we get that.
If I might just step in, just introduce myself. David Burson, working in the Hadley office, so the Amherst office of Peyton Wilson-Mutson-McConnell with Tom Grady and Peter McConnell.
Yeah.
So we were actually, last night, hired as a special town council on behalf of this application. And just, kind of, before you make your decision with respect to at least the roof, one thing I would like to say is that at least as far as what we're requesting for the relief from section 19.3, part of the reason that we're actually requesting that relief from the ZBA before the planning board hearing is because, I mean, obviously, they will ultimately have the final approval, or say-so, on the special permit itself. But in order for them to really actually even hear this as a consideration in their, you know, reviewing the application, they're gonna need to know that, you know, we've already received relief from the zoning board of appeals with respect to our request on the roof seam issue. Which is why we're requesting that you, that this board consider that relief tonight, with the understanding that ultimately, planning board's gonna make their decision one way or the other relative to whether this is an appropriate roof on this, on this building. And I would just like to add that, you know, there's plenty of examples of the same style roof right in the immediate area, first congressional church.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against a metal roof.
Sure.
In fact, I think it's probably more, more prudent.
More cost efficient.
Yeah. But, you know, I just, there's gonna be a lot of issues that come before this project, and, you know, we're taking exceptions to things that we don't know, you know, how many different issues are gonna come before planning board. And I just, I'd at least like to have them have their initial hearing and see if there's some of those, you know, I imagine they'll have a, you know, checklist of how many different things they need to discuss and need to show up.
Right. But John, that's already been done through their site plan approval process. They have a peer review. That's what the peer review is for. This is totally separate, again, this is totally separate from the issues of site plan approval. All you have in front of you is one thing, and that is, for whatever reasons that they give you, we use it, give them relief to allow the standing seam roof on. Because our bylaws are written to state that metal roofs have to look like shingles. Well, that's not a very efficient type of metal roof. The whole idea, which we want as a town, is trying to make our buildings as energy-efficient as we can. And the best way of putting solar onto a building is with a metal roof. Because, one, you're not compromising the envelope itself. The clamping method is on the external portion of the roof, you're not putting holes in it. That's the whole reason for it, and that's one of the reasons we went to the metal roofs on this, because if we can get the grants to put solar on these things to try to minimize the cost to the town, we're gonna do it.
And is the solar project part of the original or the proposed plan?
If they have enough money, it can be. But right now, no, because based on estimates, that's one of the things that they had to eliminate.
We're always however looking for a donor.
In terms of the order with the site plan, site plan approval, if, if, does the planning board still have a say over what the roof would look like? So I understand the planning board's point of view is that the bylaws don't allow for a metal roof, so they're saying they can't, they can't say, do anything with that. If we give a variance to allow them to ask for a metal roof, does the planning board still have authority to say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna approve it?
Yes, they actually can.
And if I may also jump in, so the metal roof, that 19.3 section of the Villadoble, it's actually like a, a design review standard for the permit granting authority. So it's meant to be kind of, you know, they say, you know, make best efforts, detail elements which are recommended and suggested as kind of like the preamble to the section. So there are things that the planning board, you know, typically should be looking for in their review of the permits. But ultimately, we think it's more appropriate and more conservative to make sure that we have the ability to even bring that to their attention. So that when they're reviewing the application, they know, you know, they've already received the appropriate relief from the zoning board, we can actually consider this seam metal roof.
Well, it gets rid of their ability to say that this is not allowed as, like, in bright line.
Right off the bat.
Right. Circumstance, so, but they still, they still have, they still have oversight over the design elements of it.
Correct.
So if you tried to put a bright yellow roof on there or something, they could still say, yeah, but just...
What they would say is, in our opinion, it's not appropriate to...
Just because we say that, that they can ask for a metal seam roof, it doesn't mean...
It doesn't mean that that's the ultimate.
Yeah, okay. So we're not, we're not the ones making...
Right, you're just, they're, they're asking for relief from the bylaw, but the ultimate say yes, yeah, you're absolutely right, like he just said, you just said.
Well, what it does is to put more pressure on them because you're going into them with approval from us.
That's why they...
That's why I don't want the...
But we're only...
Don't put the cart before the horse.
It isn't. But we're, we'd only be giving, so we're only giving them approval to, like, ask for it. The planning board can still say, no, we don't, we don't want to put another roof, we don't want you to have a metal roof for whatever reason.
Yeah, we're not, we're not necessarily backing the planning board into a corner. They still have the option to say, no, all we're doing is granting them the permission to, like, either ask for it.
Well, what you're doing is you're granting them a change from the zoning bylaw that says that the zoning board is allowing it. And so then you go into the, the planning board and say, well, the zoning board's already approved it.
But they have, again, it's just a design standard, and they, they have the ultimate say over it. And that's happened a number of times in the past, John. But when you, when you're saying the cart before the horse, that's not technically true on what, what's trying to be done here. Okay? And it's not putting, it's, it's not putting them in a corner. It, it allows, it actually allows the planning board a little latitude to make a decision either way, instead of just one way. And it's not, they, they're not gonna come back and say, thanks a lot, zoning board, for, for granting the metal roof, because now we're pushed into a corner. No, they're not. So... That's all we can say to you, John, so you figure it out.
Okay. So what do we?
It's up to you.
Well...
If you, 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 you're also the chair.
Yeah.
So if you, if your opinion hasn't been swayed, you look at them and say...
Well, I would, I, I would say we table it.
We're... Table it for, to go back to the planning board?
Yeah.
To come back here?
Yeah.
The only thing I'll, once again, say, I mean, planning board can't give us that relief without this first.
So you're kind of, and correct me if I'm wrong, you, like, where Phil and John were saying that we might be adding an unnecessary step in this chain of events, whereas we're not necessarily pushing the planning board's arm, we're just giving them the opportunity to rule on this then and there.
Without going through, through another...
Because if they, if they have no problem with it, and, but, and they're all yes on the metal, the standing seam metal roof, they're gonna have to come back here anyway for us to grant this information for them to even say that they can do it.
Very well said.
So, I mean, it's... I mean, it, it sort of seems like if, um, if, if you don't, and, if you don't want, if you don't wanna do the variance, I think, I think we should vote down the variance and let them move on with their plan. Because I think if we, I think, I think by, like, they're just inevitably gonna come back and ask us again, because the planning board can't.
Yeah, but they won't, they won't be able to come back for two years.
Right, for two years.
Well, if we vote it down, I know, but if we just, if we just table it, they're gonna come back, and, and I think so.
Well, like I said, if the, if the planning board, you know, reviews this in their first meeting, uh, public hearing...
But the planning board's gonna say, there's a law that, that section 19.3 says it has to be a shingle-like appearance, so we're gonna deny your, your metal roof. And then they're gonna...
Well, you, you made the decision, unfortunately, when you do that, that, that there won't be any ability to do a relief. If John, if, if John doesn't wanna vote in favor of it, I would table it because that's going to be the request.
And that's actually, right, if, if, I don't want to, so I just certainly don't wanna push this board into voting it down. I would much rather have a continuous to your meeting.
Same here.
I would much rather that scenario than...
Please do that.
Yeah, we can do that. I was just kind of saying that if John's answer is always gonna be no, then it would save everyone time to just say no.
No, when he's, no, it's not always gonna be no. What he's asking is, he wants...
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking John that.
He just wants the opinion of the...
I want the opinion first.
John, you're allowed to have your own opinion, I'm not, like, trying to bully you on it, I'm just saying that if you could say right now, I don't care what the planning board says, I don't care what anyone says, I'm just gonna say no every time they come in. I don't know, that's why I was asking, because in that case, we should just say no, no, because then they can move on.
No.
If, if it matters what happens throughout the, as it goes, then, then, yeah, I agree.
And, and the same with the, with the next one. I mean, that one's even got more controversy regarding the frontage deal.
What is that?
Well, you've got the, you've got the, let's do this one first.
Yeah, let's finish it after the evening's play for you.
So, um, then I would take it that we'll have a motion to table.
Motion to table, second?
Second.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we start the meeting?
Yeah, when's the next?
Um, planning board meeting is...
Nineteen.
Nineteen. And...
Twenty-first, are you available the twenty-first?
Yeah.
On a Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Is everybody available the twenty-first?
I am.
Yeah? So that'll be June twenty-first. Seven?
Yeah, I won't be around, so you guys are gonna have to open the...
I'm sure there's a key.
Yes.
I opened it tonight.
Yep.
Okay. Um, the Town Senior Center Building Committee seeks a finding for frontage nonconformity to existing frontage, 145 feet for the proposed senior center is less than required by current zoning.
That's the wrong number here.
Don't worry about it. That's...
So the, the feet?
I'll correct it.
Okay. Also, they seek variance from section 8.8.8 to install underground propane tanks.
Okay.
And who wants to speak?
So I'll, I'll speak. So the, can I have a, start with the, the frontage piece. I apologize, just really have to dig plans, but it's easier to see. So the, the existing, the, the frontage required in the business, in the business district is 175 feet. The existing frontage is actually 160.76.
Existing is...
160.76. These are all showing it, but I don't get one that's relatively clear. So this is, this course right here is 160.76.
Now, this is where the sidewalk is right now?
Um, yes. The reality of the situation is that this has, has obviously been a continued use since 1920, when this property was taken by the town. Frontage hasn't changed. This has been a continuous use of the property, and we, we believe that it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and it doesn't derogate, the intent refers to bylaw to allow us to continue to use this lot with the frontage being less than, you know, 15-feet difference. That's our pitch, I think it's appropriate in this case. This board has the authority to do that. And unlike, unlike the roof piece, which, you know, is a design consideration for the planning board, this is really more of a pure zoning question for this board to consider.
Now, I see it says senior centered here, and you said this was the existing sidewalk?
That's the existing, uh, yes.
Okay, so I thought the library was gonna be in the front...
This is the, this is the as-is.
This is as-is.
That's, that's the current hook, is it?
Oh, okay.
This is as-is.
So that's not the proposed, that's the existing?
That's existing. And we're not changing the frontage at all. The frontage is remaining the same.
No, okay. And so the library will be the first building, right?
Yes.
Correct.
So, does the library have to come before us also? Because it's two buildings using the same frontage.
Which is legal and, and adly for commercial buildings, you have multiple...
Well, you're saying they have to come before us also.
That's your opinion. It's up to you guys.
I don't...
Well, if, this is strictly use of a non-conforming property, you're changing, you're modifying it from one building, taking it down and putting two more buildings up. It's just the same question on the same lot, so...
And the same owner.
And the same owner.
I would argue that, I mean, obviously, this is, I'll argue, but I'll argue that the, as far as variances are concerned, particularly with this type of variance, because it applies to the lot as a whole, it wouldn't apply to each building. Essentially, you're permitting us to use that, the same amount of frontage that we've always used for that lot, but for the new altered use.
How about it's not a finding?
What's that?
How about it's not a finding?
It would be a finding.
Okay. So it's not...
No, it's not a variance, this, this is a finding from, from this board, not a variance.
The variance is for underground propane tanks.
The variance is for underground propane tanks.
So the, the technical finding that this board would be considering is just that whether or not this change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformant, or non-conforming frontage. And it's our, it's our belief that the, that this change in use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing use of the frontage situation.
My, my opinion, it's been used as, it's been used as an elementary school, it's been used as a senior center.
Mm-hmm.
Now it's gonna be used as a senior center and as a library.
I guess, I guess what, what I'd like to see is what the two pieces are gonna look like in terms of, you know, how they're situated and everything, because obviously, they're gonna be made to fit one way or another.
Well, I mean, as far as, as far as what the planning board will be considering, I mean, you're ultimately, what you'd be considering is whether or not we could use the existing frontage as-is for the proposed use, whether or not it's gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood, but the planning board, what they'll be considering is site circulation, you know, what appropriate and safe, you know, movement throughout the site may be. And that is something that we'll have to be submitting, you know, professional engineers will be providing information in terms of appropriate site circulation, what the safest routes are throughout the site. So we really do believe that actually, if anything, you know, when we do make, whatever changes ultimately occur on that site in terms of the site circulation and movement throughout, it's ultimately gonna be a safer site than it is currently.
John, I can weigh in on this one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because it's a new one. It seems to me that the, that the request for a finding is reasonable. And I don't see that, um, well, I really don't see that it is less, that it's more detrimental to the neighborhood. It seems to me that it's pretty close to what it's always been.
I guess, you know, my, my only concern at this point is, you know, they're gonna put a lot through this lot or a lot on this lot, and how it's situated, how the parking and traffic and everything.
That, that's too many issues, all they're looking at-
That's the point, that's-
Yeah.
Yeah, all they're looking at here is the existing frontage, is it more or less detrimental? Only one thing.
And what is the required?
One seventy-five.
Also, we're looking at just fifteen feet.
Ninety-five.
So it's fifteen feet.
And that's been for almost a hundred years.
It may have actually been, I, we didn't look previously to the use of it as a school, but it may have actually, I mean, it would have been the same frontage even before the town took it in nineteen twenty.
It would have been the same?
It started until nineteen sixty-one, so...
Yeah, that's when-
And that was a hundred and twenty-five, back in those days.
It's just like all the houses, like, you've dealt with, people on Middle Street and West Street, they've taken them down and they wanna rebuild, and they've come in for a finding because their lots are narrow, those are existing lots. They're not changing the lots, they're not doing anything there, and the, the major issues that you dealt with on those was the setbacks with those. And luckily with, with these buildings, there's no issues with setbacks.
Or any other dimensional requirement, in fact, complying with everything else.
So...
All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we find the existing frontage one forty-five feet as, um-
One sixty-five, excuse me.
One sixty-five, sorry.
So it's one forty-five here?
Yeah, that's, that was my mistake because that's what was on the assessors map, and I took it not of the survey map.
Okay, so not, so one sixty-five feet, and that it is not more not, more detrimental to the existing neighborhood.
The only thing I would just, it's, it's one sixty point seven six, I just don't want it-
Yeah, it does show that right here.
Turns out we lied, there's five more feet.
Second?
Second, Ed?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Cut that one down.
Aren't you glad to have me back?
Of course. Um, and then also seeks a variance from section eight, eight, eight to install underground propane tanks.
I have a letter from the fire chief.
Uh, let's see, from Chief Bankneal. I spoke aggressively with both John Michkowski and Max Maskey to review the underground propane tank issue. They both agree with me that this is a non-issue as we have numerous residents and rental properties with L P U S Ts. I am the A H J on the permitting and inspecting of underground tanks and lines to the building, and I'm comfortable with the plan that we have reviewed, and I feel that it meets the five twenty-seven C M R, um, one point zero zero fire protection regulations and references to N F P A fifty-eight. I will make every effort to be at the meeting as this really needs to be removed at the next town meeting.
What's the meaning by that? I think the, the bylaw.
The bylaw, needs to be modified, just like the metal roof portion of bylaw needs to be modified.
Okay. Oh, and are these tanks gonna serve as both buildings?
No.
No, just, just the senior center.
One needs to be secured for the generator, that is a fire regulation.
They don't have a generator, John?
They have to.
It's a heating cooling center for the town.
See, C L C, there's, there's a second propane tank just for the generator here, and then another one, the primary tank located here.
The second tanks?
Um, I believe they're a thousand gallons, yes, of the propane.
The underground, right?
Underground, correct. I believe that this bylaw was enacted in the nineties with respect to these tanks, and they have come a long way in terms of the safety and the mechanics of these, these tanks. And I wish that the fire chief were here because he is way better versed in, in the actual technical specifications of these tanks. However, this just is somewhat necessary for this project. We don't wanna have these giant tanks sitting above ground, I think it'd be a huge high score for everybody involved. And because of the width of the actual, the lot itself, as Sir Mayhart indicated, they are relatively narrow, we would be giving them either open space or parking area if we had to put them above ground.
There, there's so many advantages to put them under the ground, and the primary, one of the primary reasons for one of the tanks is because we can't have natural gas anymore. So, I mean, it's, it's-
Can I guess that's why the library isn't having propane?
Because they're on gas.
What do you mean, uh?
They, they have it naturally, yeah, they've got natural gas.
Yeah, we have gas and, um-
That, that building right now, the Hooker School, has gas.
Right, so they can-
They can hook up to that, and you can put another pipe underneath?
Yeah.
Can't hook up, can't use any more gas, there's no gas to use.
However, when the moratorium ends, we will have piped it so we can use natural gas, and then we will remove the propane tanks. Because that is our preference, but-
It's everyone's preference right now.
But in the meantime, this is all our alternative.
Well, you're only- I only, yeah, yeah.
This is a dumb question, I'm sure, but where is the drive here? It looks-
Oh, it's not showing on-
It's not shown, because this is the-
These tanks aren't deep underneath the parking lot.
No, 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 it's here, it's in the fly, it's in the- And all the parking lot, this is an empty space.
It's big, big, it's excellent.
And, and once again, you know, these are still being vetted for the planning board's review, so it's, I mean, it is possible that these, you know, the prox, these are proximate locations, they may not be definite. What we're asking for is, is permission ultimately to, to use underground storage tanks.
Propane is a cheap now either.
Cheaper than oil.
Cheaper than oil, yeah.
More efficient too, cleaner.
So, it would be good.
I didn't ask for one yet.
I didn't think there was enough going on.
And, do you have any questions?
Um, so, I mean, it's not really a question, more of like a statement, that typically, this is the type of thing that I would say that makes me kinda nervous for us to weigh in on, kinda like when we are creating things for whole closet apartments and things like that. But, that's why I asked to see this, and, and it makes me feel better that the fire chief is on board with it, just because I don't know anything about these things, and generally, we have to sort of trust the-
Professionals.
The bylaws and the professionals. I, I think, I think we probably can give a fair amount of, put a fair amount of weight in, in that.
Does the state fire marshal have any input on this?
Joe, Joe, the chief, they're on it, too, they understand the issues.
I just wondered, wondered if in a commercial type building, if they had to-
No, what Mike has is the person that makes the decision. Yeah, it needs all the requirements.
I mean, I'm not questioning Mike's, I want to question his, does the state have any?
Yes, no.
I think, believe the state, I mean, the state has their own level of, of standards and regulations that, that he has to abide by right in the force, so.
Didn't, um, don't, don't, uh, don't the, some of the newer restaurants have this type of thing?
Uh, Tyson Roadhouse does.
It's above-
But they're above ground.
They're above.
Yeah. Not, they're not the best looking thing above ground, to be honest. They're just big, slender, yeah, I've got, I've got one.
Gary, uh, he's pointed out that it also, unfortunately, because it would be visible from Route Nine, could be a real hazard for some movie with a gun. And another reason to bury it. Want me to make a brief?
Sure, go ahead.
I move that we grant a variance from section eight point eight point eight to install underground propane tanks in the Hadley senior center building.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Is it on the twenty-first? On the twenty-first, I gotta write that down. Let's do it, Brian.
June twenty-first, yes.
Yes.
Is that here?
Yeah.
Do you want to make, is this, you have a copy, I'll send you a copy, okay, great.
Yeah, I guess we'll make this part of the file.
Yes, that's fine.
If you need copies, I'll make copies right now.
Do you need, do you-
No, 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 this is fine, she can send you a copy, it's perfect.
Okay.
Which one, which was it?
You need this stuff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
They want copies that they gave us.
Oh, that, that one, that has to do with, with-
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much, nice pen. Thank you.
Welcome to our jury.
I move, I so move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Geez, I actually got a chance to be useful.